But I just think it's something that would work well at Oak Park, but that's just me. I mean, I would like to see if that's something that we could do. Mainly because I think Lake Elmo is one of our fullest schools. It's very crowded.
I know.
So it would relieve some of the crowding in Lake Elmo. That's the concern. But certainly if people really don't have a problem with that and they want to leave it there, that's fine. But just to be able to raise the question and say, what would it look like if we did? You know?
Would it be possible to like expand Oak, um, not Oak Park, but um, Lake Elmo so that the program could stay there? Or maybe expand like Brookview because I mean like it already passed?
I think that, I think the answer is there's lots of options.
Right.
They're really good questions. You could have, Lake Elmo be totally Spanish immersion. You know, different districts have started out with smaller programs within and then the building turns into a Spanish immersion. And everyone within that boundary goes to the immersion school and they love it. You know, there's lots of options. I think that's what's difficult is each option will be different. We do know, we've shared with the board to reopen Oak Park with just the basics, a principal and a nurse and that kind of thing. I think we are looking at about $650,000. So you know how you have that. And then transportation, we don't provide that right now for all of our Lake Elmo families or families who'd like to go to Lake Elmo. That'll be an increase also. So you'll know that you probably have 650 plus transportation that you'll need to cut within your current budget.
Okay. Jen?
I just, I just want to say that I, I appreciate very much idea exploration. However, where I have grave concern is we are literally in budget cutting mode right now. And this is a type of, this is a type of motion. I, I am opposed to adding, randomly adding action items on to an agenda such as this because I don't think it's governance. And I, this is a real slippery slope and a precedent that's being set that I don't support. I also would like to say that again, the beauty of the community design team is for them to look at all of these options such as this and make recommendations to us so we can all, to use the board's words, come along together, have the community right along with us, work along with us. And after those recommendations are made, then we can all feel good about, about working together towards that levy and bond. And I feel that this is going to really muddy the waters. And I am very concerned about that.
Okay. Sharon?
Uh, wait a second, I'm sorry.
Sorry. I, I agree with you and I think it's important to have the community come along with us. And that's why I brought the, brought up the recent survey that we just had where it's 68% of people are interested in, are interested in our utilizing our other buildings. And 51% are opposed to building anything new, even in an area of growth. So knowing that, I feel like we should use what we have. And if we can use what we have and help another school with overcrowding and possibly the overcrowding is the reason that the scores were so dramatically different from last year. And if we have the opportunity to do that, I think we could take, we should take it. And I would also like to add, if we did a later start, I don't think transportation would be dramatically different.
Go ahead, Sharon, you're first.
It would be.
Thank you. Um, I know we're like almost all finished, but I just, I want to say that one, I think it definitely has merit and I think Oak Park should be considered. But that I feel like the timing is too rushed and I do want to honor the community design team work. I hope that the building is considered at least part of the conversation of what will be done and I'll put it at that. So.
Just two very quick points. Number one, my recollection of the, of the survey results included the fact that the community overwhelmingly supported expanding existing schools where in areas of, of population growth. So that's not, that, that's, that's what the survey said in my, to my recollection.
Could you say that one more time?
Yes, that the community supported expanding existing, existing schools.
Yes, sorry.
In areas of population growth.
But not construction of new.
Correct. Correct. Then my, my, my second quick point is I, I still am concerned about if this were to pass, what is the administration supposed to do? There are so many variables that it seems like many, many different directions that they need to explore and there's not clear direction. So that, again, it's a, it's a big concern for me as to how the process would play out because there isn't clarity in the, in the motion.
This is my last thing, I promise. I understand, I understand what you're saying, but if we also heard that the information was going to be provided to them anyway, I don't see how it's dramatically different. If, if they're going to go look at all our buildings, they're even going to go look at Withrow or they're going to go look at Oak Park. So I would imagine that they're looking at those buildings and would be told, this is what could be done. So if they're going to be provided that information anyway, I don't see how this is dramatically different.
Just wait for the community design team.
As, as I listened to the motion, one of the key words I heard was feasibility. And, and I'm saying the administration could come back and point out, because some of those say like feasibility for next fall. And what might come out is that's maybe impossible is too strong, but it might be, that would be a lot to pull off, both financially, et cetera, et cetera. On the other hand, it might say over the long term, waiting for the committee, et cetera. It might be feasible a year from now or two years from now, but even then, these are the drawbacks, these are the pluses. I was encouraged, Kristin, when, when you acknowledged to, to Sarah that, yeah, this worked in another district and it did lead to increased revenue. But the hard part on that is, okay, what kinds of studies, what kinds of measures you put out right now in order to pull that off? And, and that's, and that's a tough one. But there are, you know, but, but maybe this starts, it doesn't, it isn't the end game, but maybe this starts some of the questions and triggers that. So maybe that part. That's why quite frankly, I'm torn on this decision because there's things I want to know too. I want to know the feasibility of Oak Park. I want to know, would the Spanish immersion work someplace else better and what are the pros and cons? And I suspect what we're going to get is mixed. There's reasons to why the dual immersion is where it is now. But if it was geographically located better, does that free up more space? I like what Denise said too, even in that maybe we turn Lake Elmo into a Magnus School for immersion. But in its present setting, we're, we're doing two things that perhaps we don't have the facility to do that right now.
You know, we have the ability to pull numbers and those kind of things together, but isn't this whole process about what our community wants? It's not, you know, what school district administration think they could, they can pull off or, you know, we can pull those numbers, but really isn't the real thing you want from our community is what they want to buy in? I mean, the, the actual doing of this, whether it's, you know, would be moving immersion to Oak Park or expanding it where it currently is, any of those, we can actually do that and turn that around fairly quickly. But some of the parameters that you're all talking about right now are the things that the community design team would have to decide unless you decide as a board that you're going to make that decision instead.
Any other questions, comments? If not, we'll call for a vote. And, and one more time.
I'm making a motion to request that the administration explore options and gather information for a possible expansion of the Amigos Unidos immersion program. This should include an option to move the program to Oak Park Elementary and to provide transportation from all elementary schools, as well as to determine whether it is feasible to expand the program for next fall.
Okay. Are you ready? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye and raising your right hand, please.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Motion carries four three. Moving on, we go to the district chair report and a couple of things I want to cover and I will try to be brief and go very, very quickly. Thanks everybody for coming. Board chair report, first thing I want to touch on is the delegate assembly for the Minnesota School Boards Association. And I think most of you know that Sarah and I were both nominated for that position. And there is an election was held because there were six candidates and five spots. And your support is deeply appreciated and I thank all of you because both Sarah and I were elected. The value of that committee is that it helps select topic areas at the greater gathering in December on what areas that MSBA is going to pursue legislatively. You know, it's more complicated than that, has more ramifications than that. And, but again, my main point there is just saying thanks to everybody else. The other one that I, I just want to clear the record and, and make straight, and I was asked to do this, and, and the context of this is, these are very, very difficult discussions for us. And I, and I think the community, the board, I think others at this point are very, very divided. That scares me a great deal because I'm saying if we're going to pass any kind of levy renewal, if we're going to pass any kind of bonding issue, regardless of what comes out of the design committee, is if, if we remain divided as we go along, we're not going to even have a fighting chance. And, and so what I urge the community to do, I urge myself to do, and, and I've tried to do this very, very carefully and, and, but at the same time, I'm saying, think hard on this stuff. Squeeze yourself, rise to the occasion. I know at times I probably disappoint some regardless of which side they're on this issue, but I think we're all tussling with this. I know that both the superintendent and myself and the vice chair and the assistant superintendent, we've been gunned some discussions, very hard discussions at our chair superintendent meeting. And, and I would urge others to reach inside and outside. Again, I would urge very, very strongly that we still maintain our decor and civility. Sometimes it's hard because it's emotionally so trying. There are some events that occur that don't necessarily pull us together and I think we've got to think hard about that. I know there was a media report that was made last night and I, I have to be on the record and I, and I'm not going to condemn it, nor am I going to praise it, but I'm saying it does not represent an official position by the board of ed. And I, and I'm going to leave it at that. And so having said that, I, I'm going to move on to the working group reports and I'm going to start with community engagement.
Okay, thank you. Community engagement met this morning. We talked first about the relationships first I mentioned at the last board meeting, if you would mark your calendars for November 6th. If you are able, this is just a cool thing that we're doing in partnership with Washington County and Lakeview Hospital to bring in a speaker and there will also be a resource fair. And our task is to greet, that's it, to just be at the door, to wear your new name tag and some pony gear and just be a presence supporting our kids and our families as they seek to do what's best for their kids. Second, we looked over to my Chair Potajek's question earlier, we received only two applications for World's Best Workforce, so we are going to reopen the application window as soon as I get a link for that. I will send it out to you if you would please think of people and if there are some in the audience or listening at home who are interested in serving or know somebody who would be interested in serving, please reach out to them. We probably want another five or so members, so if you can reach out to those you know. Thank you to the World's Best Workforce Advisory for giving us the community strategies that we could discuss today. And then that's, and then we talked about the, the community strategies. That is all we got done today.
Okay, thank you, Sharon. Moving on to finance and operations.
We met September 24th and we discussed the Brookview financing and also the refinancing options with Matt, who was here earlier. We discussed the status of the board's spending sheet and actually it was used for the first time, which I really appreciate. And I had questions and the questions came back and I forgot to email you, Bob, but I really appreciate you clarifying that and that was very helpful. We talked about our treasurer's report and I don't know if the format of the treasurer's report is like what, what we used to have, if the old treasurer's report had maybe had a little bit more detail. Didn't, didn't change. Okay, but we, there weren't really a whole lot of questions about the treasurer's report. And we get those quarterly? Because I know we've seen two in the finance.
You, you saw too quickly because we, because of the close of the fiscal year, with June not really closing until the audit work was complete, that's when we got backlogged as far as the timing of when you receive them.
Okay.
I honestly am struggling with trying to recall if it, if it was a monthly or a quarterly thing. I'm inclined to say quarterly.
That's what I was thinking.
But.
Okay, thank you. And we talked about the robotics team, that they lost their funding and I brought that to the partnership plan. The partnership plan had some more questions and I got back those questions and I think Superintendent Pontrelli, you had already reached out to somebody else too and that's kind of in the works. And I'll let you talk about that because there's really not a whole lot else we talked about except that we did discuss the possible need for additional budget cutting that we need, that we might need to do in the future. So, but I think she wanted to talk about that.
Sure, we just, with the robotics, we approached a couple of vendors who might be willing to give our students some money and then are helping the kids and their teachers create a grant for the partnership plan. And they just submitted to, submitted to me earlier tonight what they are working on and I'm going to edit it and then we'll send it on.
That's awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. So we got finance legislative. We had, what, four people there? My colleagues from the board are Jennifer and Tina and superintendent, Pontrelli attended, Carissa attended. Our agenda roughly are about these areas. One thing we're working on, and it will be somewhat similar to last year without the specifics completely set up yet, but we're working on a platform and a platform we will bring to the greater board for their consideration, review and suggestions. We'll probably try to use a similar rationale to what we did last year, probably about three items. And then probably justification that we can give to legislators and others for specifically, this is what we're working for. There may be other titles, et cetera. Sometimes what we fall back on is some of the other coalitions that we belong to, whether it's the Minnesota School Boards Association or whether it's Schools for Equity and Education or the AMSD. And their platform C has theirs out there. AMSD is very close, but they don't have it out there yet. But we use some of that for guidelines. Also what the superintendent and Carissa in particular brought and are working on is a calendar of events. And some of the major events, we are having a legislative breakfast and we will probably host that at Oak Park. And the date, Carissa, is November?
I think eighth.
Eighth.
Eighth, okay. And it will be morning and it will be publicized as a public meeting, so every, anybody's entitled there to be there. But we would say this too, is we're trying to invite any of our present legislators to be there. We are also going to invite the executive directors or their counterparts or representative from there. And generally we go around the room and give about five minutes or so for each legislator to introduce themselves, speak. And then we also typically call on those three attendees and there may be three or four this year. We will invite all board members directly and hopefully give them an opportunity to speak. We like to take some commentary from the four, but at that same time, we'll give out our platform if it's ready and done. And so a lot of events coming together quick, but again, if there's 200 people there or 100 people there or 70 people there, I can't promise you that in that hour, hour and a half, everybody's going to have an opportunity. You'll be able to have an opportunity to be heard, but we have to have some sort of structure in order to it. And anybody who was there last year, we're going to try to emulate what we did last year. And I think we were very proud. We were very crowded, but we were proud and most people had an opportunity to be heard. Other things that we'll be doing, last year with the help of the C organization, we met with legislators at the Capitol and we sent a collection of people, over 30 individuals. And I got the numbers for other districts that went to C. Nobody else even hit double digits. So that was, but again, that's a public meeting. Anybody who wants to come may come there. When we get more information on where we're going to be at the Capitol, we'll try to forward that to you and make you aware of it. You can come and go because sometimes it gets lengthy and long and we're there probably five or six hours, not counting transportation to and from. But again, when we go, what we try to push with our part of the legislation is whatever our platform is. So it's not G, anything goes and you can do that individually here. You're always entitled to try to persuade legislators as far as your criteria, but not necessarily in that setting. MSBA also has a day at the Capitol and all board members are invited to that. Also what we did last year that is on our docket for consideration is we invited all the incumbents and last year was, our last time was an election year, this one will not. And we invited them to a board meeting and, and we monitored that, gave them the questions ahead of time, gave them some time to speak and we're hoping to do something similar to that. Anything I left out, that's pretty much the legislative meeting.
If you go to the Capitol or come to Shuse, it's a long, long walk.
Okay. So having done that, I'm going to go to policy.
The policy working group met this past Tuesday on October 8th. We worked on the policies that we brought forward and then we also re-reviewed at length our policy 520, which is about student surveys. And that will be coming forward at a future date sometime soon. Also, we looked at 401, equal opportunity employment and 402 disability, non-discrimination. And so we're going to be trying to plow through some of the 400s, which are meant, a lot of them are mandatory and they're pretty short. So we'll be bringing those forward as soon as they're ready. And the other thing we did is we started to kind of dig into the student results policy, which if you guys remember is part of our board goals, is to update our student results policy. We have one that's relatively short. MSBA has a whole series, the 600 series, which kind of really, all of them relate to student performance. And so we're taking a look at that. And I think that what's going to be needed is at some point in the, in the near future, we should probably schedule a, a board work session and we'll try to have some, some ideas and some, some of the work kind of pre-done so we don't start from scratch. But I think this is something that's important enough that the entire board really does need to weigh in and so we'll just have to kind of figure out what that might look like. But there's a lot of good stuff in there and it's nice to be able to talk about academics and dig into what we really want to see for our students. And our next meeting is not until November 5th.
I think, I think I got everybody. Quickly on board member reports, Mark, should we start with you and work this out?
Sure, yeah, just very quickly. I, I did have a chance to attend the high school band kaleidoscope concert, which was last weekend and it is beyond fantastic. I think that I would pay any price to see that, that concert. Number of different performers, different groups. It just, it just shows the, the excellence that we have in our, in, in our music program and as well as these kids devoting that time to be prepared for that concert. My second thought is that I, some of you may recall, I did make some, a statement at the end of the board meeting, September 12th. I would recommend that you go back and revisit that statement. I think it has some good advice to follow.
I'm good.
Next, I'm, I'm just kind of assuming.
Just very quickly, Dido, on the band concert, I was there also and also at the Rotary event tonight, there were several groups from the Wind Symphony that were performing and they are professional quality musicians. We are very lucky here to have a great music program and to be able to see them out at professional events, it's really kudos to our teachers and our students.
Okay. What I was trying to look up very, very quickly is I attended the C meeting, the C regional meeting, and they talked about legislation. What I just want to remind board members of is you're welcome and, and administrators too, to attend the next C meeting. The commissioner will be there for the state. And more importantly, some of you have heard me mention Tom Melcher in the past and Tom is kind of the financial guru at MDE. And I heard at that meeting that he's going to be retiring in January, so that's a huge loss. But he also will attend the next C meeting. And what I was scrambling for there, I think the meeting is November 22nd, that's the next one. There might be one before that and if there is, you'll probably get an invite. But again, if you plan to attend, all you got to do is tell Sherry and, and she'll register you. That's one where they like it ahead of time. You could still do a walk-on without that, but it's a little nicer for planning. And I'm going to turn it over to Sarah.
Okay. My apologies, I realize how late it is, but I do have some things I really want to share relating to the intermediate district 916. First of all, they've been struggling for quite some time to get a new finance director and I'm happy to report they have one. His name is Patrick Jacobson Schulte and he seemed very impressive and we were introducing him at our last meeting. 916 is going through a really comprehensive process of really implementing multi-tiered systems of support throughout their system. And so we had a report on that, was very fascinating and they've been happy to report really a lot of success. In your packets, I have put this piece of paper and a little reminder here that the 916 has a foundation, just sort of like our partnership plan. And I've been tasked to invite all of you to consider making a donation, no matter how small or large. Because if we, if all of us can make a donation to the foundation, that, that demonstrates a lot of support for our students. We do have a lot of students that participate in varied programs at 916. And one of those programs that I'd like to point out, I think we all got this email from 916 Career and Tech Info Session and Tours. On October 24th, from 8 to 10 a.m., there is going to be an info session and program tour for all of the Career and Tech Center work. There are, it says, experience the many upgrades and updates in the 20 programs and the nine career pathways that over 900 students experience each year at 916 Career and Tech by attending the interactive informal session and program tours. So I think you guys all got this email, I just wanted to point it out. I went to this a couple of years ago. It's really, really cool to see what they do there.
October 24th?
October 24th from 8 to 10 a.m. And then finally, this is kind of important, I would really like to get feedback from you guys. Apparently there is a National School Board Association, the NSBA Annual Conference. This year it's in Chicago. I think they said it was in February. And because 916 is actually made up of 14 member districts, what they have is a rotating schedule where each of the member districts gets to go and represent. schedule where each of the member districts gets to go and represent 916. This year, it happens to be our turn, the Stillwater School District's turn. If we would like to go to the National School Board Association conference, it would be covered through 916. And I'm bringing this up now because I need to let them know if that's something we're interested in doing. And because it's in February and we'll have our organizational meeting, I don't know if I'm going to be still at 916 or if it will be one of us, another one of us up there representing our school district. So I'm putting that out there. I really want to know, like, what should we do? Should we tell them we want to do that? I think this sounds like a cool conference. I mean, it might be fun to go. Anyways, but.
It's very worthwhile. I haven't gone, but I've heard people who have. I turned it down a number of times.
Oh, have you? Okay. So that I didn't really know. But anyway, that's out there. If we want to go, we can, it's our turn. So I need to let them know if we don't want to do it because they'll give it to somebody else.
So can I just, they cover the conference meeting?
And transportation.
And transportation and hotel.
Basically, the cost.
Which is significant.
Yeah.
Yes, it is.
You could bring back all that information and share it with us.
And it's in April.
Oh, it's in April? Okay. Yeah, I knew it was after January, I just didn't know for sure when.
And if you're ever interested, I can refer you to people who've gone, so.
All right. Just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you.
That's it?
That's it. Real briefly, I went to a couple of C meetings, and Principal Fields took me on a tour of Oakland. I also wanted to quickly clear up a comment made at Open Forum that there is actually no investigation was launched. iPad does not investigate, but Mr. Blondin had paid $200 to ask iPad for an opinion on me. And I want to reiterate, attending an open and posted meeting does not violate the open meeting law. That's it.
Chair.
All righty. I, just to, I attended the Cultural Jambalaya Diversity Awards last week at the Metropolitan. There were people from all over the state of Minnesota at this function. I, to be honest, I don't feel like I deserve to be there. I am the lucky one for being invited to this. The school that, the group that was honored and won, and they were honored last, and I think they saved the best for last purposely, were the, it was a collaboration with Family Means, the Simran Team Program, as well as StoryArc. And I sat at a table with a bunch of young ladies, and I just, I can't tell you how wonderful it was for me and experience to learn from these young women and the sheer level of strength they had. And what their presentation was, it was a school group of first-generation immigrant students using the power of storytelling to depict realistic fiction about topical issues, including immigration, deportation, and discrimination. Kudos to these wonderful, wonderful future leaders. And just lastly, you know, this was a tough night, and I just, I think about Chair Potatik, about a lot of your words of the first two years I was on the board. And I would just like to say this. When our actions are not in line with our words, we open ourselves to the distrust of our community. When we treat board members differently, we create division. The best way we can bridge the divide is by looking in the mirror every single day and doing better. Thank you.
Okay. I think that's it. We are adjourned.